Welcome to the September 24, 2015 zoning board of adjustment. Two of the three items have been continued to the October 8 meeting. Because we do not have a quorum, I will entertain a motion to put these to the October 8, these three items to the October 8 meeting. Would someone make a motion? Dan made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Galen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, so the zoning board of adjustment agenda in its entirety has been continued to the October 8 meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now commence with the Rapid City Planning Commission meeting for September 24. Any member of the audience who wishes to speak to an item on the planning commission agenda, there are speaker request forms on the table along the left wall. Please fill out the request with the agenda number, the item you wish to speak to, and hand it to the staff seated on the left of the dais. Cell phones and electronic devices. Language to be used. Please continue to retain your cellphone and other electronic device on, off, or to silent mode. If you need to take a call, please step out into the hallway so that the meeting will not be disrupted. Items 1 through 8 have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from a consent calendar by a planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of the planning commission are recommendations to city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the filing following item. Item 5, 15 PD 031. The Rapid City Planning Commission's actions on this item is final unless any party appeals the decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the planning, Community Planning and Development Services Department by the close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items 1 through 8 that staff would like removed from the calendar? Are there any items planning commissioners would like removed? Any items audience members would like removed? I would take a motion. Motion's been made by Jan and seconded by Eric to approve items 1 through 8 with the exception of item number 6. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item number 6.
Item number 6 is a vacation of right-of-way for a portion of West Rapid Street. Associated with a variance which was just continued to the October 8 meeting. Let me show you where it's located. It's southeast corner of St. On Street and West Rapid Street. It's location of the Print Market. The area to be vacated is where the structure that was constructed currently encroaches into the right-of-way. We can hear the vacation right-of-way independent of the variance request because it's different criteria for review. In particular, the remaining right-of-way is sufficient for the local street that it is, and it does not interfere with public or private utilities, and staff's recommendation is to support the vacation of right-of-way independent of the variance application. Properties zone, general commercial district, the right-of-way would become general commercial district. It's located north of West Main Street, which is an arterial street on city's major street plan. We do have residential properties to the north, but everything north of West Main and south of West Rapid is zone general commercial. The exhibit showing the portion of right-of-way to be vacated and site plan, what happened with this was that in the past, in June 2014, a variance was approved to construct, to reduce the front yard setback for a new addition from 25 feet to 5 feet when the building was built, as was approved by zoning board of adjustment. It turns out it actually encroached 1.9 feet into the right-of-way for a length of 40 plus or minus feet. And so another variance in the vacation of right-of-way is now before you to clean up that situation. This is a, showing the addition that was built, it was a 20 by 40 addition to the Existing parking on the east side of the building, building that's directly to the east, and looking east along West Rapid. We have commercial on the right-hand side of the page and residential to the left. This is looking kitty-corner to northeast, single-family dwelling. To the north, single-family dwellings. Looking north along St. On Street, more residential. To the west, we have more residential. To the southwest, looking towards West Main, there's some commercial on West Main and on St. On Street. That parking that is shown backs into the right-of-way, that was included in the previous variance request and approved to allow parking spots on the west side of the building to back into the right-of-way. And looking at the addition on the west side of the building. So as noted, the variance request was continued to the October 8, but independent of that, staff is recommending approval of the vacation right-of-way request.
Karen.
Thank you, pleasure for the background information. I would have preferred to have those two together and would have wanted to continue that, but I understand that the roadway is wide enough to have a vacation of that portion of the right-of-way. But to me, it looks very odd to have a road that goes down, a street that goes down a ways, and then the right-of-way is kind of a jog-out just for that building. So I'm not as comfortable with the process of vacation of this portion of the right-of-way, but I will make a substitute, or a motion to request that the right-of-way vacation includes the entire property line rather than just the building section.
Madam Chair. Vicki.
And I did have a chance to visit with Karen right before the meeting started, and that is actually a very good comment. There are many times long streets where we have excess right-of-way, and if it makes sense to vacate it so that that goes back on the tax roll and the adjacent property owner can use that property, then certainly we've worked with many, many properties around Rapid City to ensure that that happens. What that would mean to the applicants is that you would revise your exhibit to include all of the right-of-way as it abuts the legal description of your property. We will need for utility letters to be sent out again, but we have ample time to do that because this, based on state law, has to be advertised for city council, so it skips the city council meeting. We'll work with you to ensure that those letters do get out so that you get those responses back, and we would assume we'll get the same concurrents letters that we did the first go-around, since if they don't have utilities in this area, they shouldn't on the balance of the right-of-way that abuts the property. So if it's my understanding, what you would like is for this to go forward with the recommendation to approve with the stipulation that the vacation of right-of-way request be revised to include all of the right-of-way that abuts the legally described property.
Correct. Thank you, Vicki.
Jan seconded the motion. Is there any further comments to be made? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to include all of the right-of-way along the property, is that correct, the way I'm saying it? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Regular agenda items. Item number 9.
Item number 9 is major amendment to plan development. This has been continued many times by the planning commission to allow the applicant to address drainage issues on the property. It's located on Padre Drive, vicinity map, north of East Minnesota Street, west, or east of Jolly Lane. Aerial view, there is actually a structure on the property and the property to the north. Future land use map, urban neighborhood, Jolly Lane is a collector's street. It's own low-density residential district 2, the plan development. Site plan showing where the structure is located on the property. If you'll remember, the, it has about a 5.4-foot setback from the property line. So to address it, they needed to vacate a portion of the utility and minor drainage easement on that north side of the property line, and that's where our issues began, that the drainage on the property seemed to be affected, or there were issues that also went on to the north property. Since that time, these are pictures from our last planning commission meeting showing where the soil had been disturbed and the new trench built between the houses to direct drainage towards the street. The new curb and drain pipe that was put into the backyards of the properties going north, so it takes drainage from the backyard of the adjacent property to the north and takes it out to the street. Last time we met, these were the pictures that were shown, showing that it was still being put in, but that progress was being made. The trench connection, you can see where the drain had already been put in through the backyard and where the inlet is. And then this was taken a couple days ago showing that it's mostly complete, other than some backfill needed once the concrete cures, and just cleaning up the property. But as you can see, this property has not yet been constructed on. Because the improvements, and the drainage improvements have been constructed and completed, and public works staff has indicated that they appear to be functional, staff recommends that the major amendment be approved with stipulation in the staff report. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
I do have a speaker request form, though. Sherri.
I'm Sherri Dieterly. I'm located at 3754 Padre Drive. I am the property adjacent to the property being proposed for the side yard setback. I would again like to express my concerns regarding the setback of the property. These are some photos that I took within my crawl space Tuesday night about 10 o'clock in the evening. As you can see from both pictures, the water within the basement is still very permanent. It's still completely saturated with, underneath the property, this is a picture of a footing that's underneath our crawl space, which is quite a ways away from actually the edge of the property, showing how damp that is. I also have, and this is the, along the wall, along that one side, showing how wet the ground is underneath there. This is also another picture. This one's a little bit harder. I suppose these are upside down for you guys. This picture is the membrane that's laid within underneath, actually right here in this area, you can't see very well from these, but there's actually standing water sitting on top of that. And as you can see, our crawl space is completely saturated with water and still has standing water that is not evaporating. I have already shown similar photos of different timeframes showing the same damage for nearly four months. I have had no improvements to the amount of moisture that is entering into my home, and I feel that this excess moisture is going to cause mold issues and structural damage to my property. I have some materials that I have found from a few reputable websites. This one's from the Building America Solutions Center, talking about moisture flow and controlling moisture flow in a building significantly impacts occupants' health, safety, comfort, building durability, and energy efficiency. This article is actually written by the EPA. Speaking of health and safety, moisture is a key ingredient to mold and bacteria growth. Not only are these fungi odorous unsightly and cause wood rot, but they cause asthma, allergic reactions in many individuals, even documented cases linking mold to more serious health problems including cancer, birth defects, immune system suspension, tissue poisoning, sick building syndrome, which is often related to mold growth. Excessive moisture also provides favorable environment for dust mites, cockroaches, and serious sources of asthma and allergy problems. Young children in particular are extremely susceptible to such poisons which can suffer side effects and allergic reactions. I have another one from the Poison Control National Capital Poison Control Center, also talking about the effects of mold that my family could undergo. You know, it's just pretty much a repeat. Side effects, this article talks about how mold can also destroy property. I also printed a pamphlet about how a structure needs a dry foundation. It can undermine foundation and cause settling cracks, wet concrete and floors which lead to undesirable conditions. If anyone would like to see any of that paperwork, I have that available. From the information and evidence I have provided, I cannot allow my family to suffer from this mistake. It would be negligent to allow the side back, setback to occur. The trapped moisture sits directly under my four-year-old son's bedroom. He is being exposed to this excess moisture for about 10 hours in the night, in addition to the time he spends playing in his room. This excess moisture has continually gotten worse since the adjacent property was built in December. I also took a few photos. These are from a property that they're building, just kitty-corner from my property. As you can see, compared to my basement, the ground is completely dry underneath there. This one shows it a little bit better, that there's absolutely no moisture at all underneath that property, which I feel proves my point that it's actually, I feel that it's due to the adjacent property being too close to my property, causing this excess moisture to be trapped within the two. I have also taken these two photos. Showing the vastness between the two yards. The picture here shows the distance between the property and the other neighboring property to the other side of that house, showing how far the distance is between those two houses, and then the distance between my home and the adjacent property. As you can see, the two properties are almost two-thirds the distance apart compared to my property. It also proves the loss and property value I will incur. The two homes are spaced the closest in the development and will reduce the ability for me to sell my home in the future. I have also stated before that one of the other neighbors that actually purchased this home did not want to buy this home because it was too close to our property. I feel that our family should not have to bear the burden of this mistake, and it is obvious from the photos that I have provided that the adjacent property is too close and is causing excess moisture to be trapped underneath my home. I will not allow my family to be harmed and my home to be destroyed and accept financial responsibility for this mistake. Do you have any questions for me?
Vicki.
Madam Chair, Cale, the engineer that assisted the applicant with the drainage plan that's in place today, perhaps he could speak to some of Sherri's comments and help us understand whether or not the encroachment is actually creating the issues with her water in her basement.
Cale?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri.
Yeah, good morning. My name's Cale McNibow. I own Spurlock Consulting, 821 Columbus Street. Yeah, we've been involved with this project for a little while now, as far as the vacation of the easement, vacation of the utility and minor drains easement on the side lot line. There is an encroachment from the house into that side yard setback. The utility easement was vacated. Now, because they're in a plan development, we're looking at a con-plan amendment to try to change this. When we initially brought this forward, the swale between the houses had been constructed, and it was not excellent workmanship. That came before the planning commission. There was discussion here to go back and to revamp the swale, if you will. We met with the staff as well as public works on the site and the owner. Came up with a plan for reconstructing the property line swale. That work has been done and pre-sotted. There was also an issue of water ponding in the backyard, and we, again, we met with the planning staff and public works staff, and we concluded that the best solution was to install some storm drains in the backyard to resolve any of the ponding issues. That work has also been constructed in accordance with the discussion we previously had at planning commission. As far as water in the crawl space of the house, I guess I don't know that it's surface water, if it's groundwater. I suspect it's probably groundwater. I don't really have any way of knowing that without some more detailed study of that. But I think that the fact that the issue before us is, are we going to make them cut two feet off this house, or are we going to allow the improvements that we discussed at planning commission, we discussed with planning staff and public works staff, and we've now completed, if that is, since we've kind of agreed that was our solution, to get the surface water between the houses and out from behind the houses, and now that that's been done, I guess our only resolution now is to either move forward or take two and a half feet off that house, which really does not solve the issue any more than it is right now.
Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'm uncomfortable with that analysis because it doesn't say to me that the water in her crawl space is not due to the encroachment on the setback. It seems obvious that there is a problem, and we don't know whose problem it is, but at this point, the most obvious cause of the problem is that the adjacent property was built too close, and that even though the contractor was told that it was too close. I'm uncomfortable with making the other, making her solve the problem if it is indeed the problem of the adjacent property, and I don't know how to determine that. I don't know if the city has inspected it enough to know what is causing the water problem, but it seems to me there probably are cheaper solutions than cutting two and a half feet off the property. I could think of some, I'm sure you can too. So anyway, I just, I'm uncomfortable with it being either the, it's both the city's and the contractor's fault and not her fault, as far as I can see, and I'm uncomfortable with making her suffer for the errors of us and the contractor, so that's it. Thank you.
Eric.
From my perspective, the issue of the drainage easement between the two houses is to address surface drainage, and we now have an engineered solution that addresses the surface drainage, but the hard part is, I'm in the same boat as Jan in that even if we've addressed the surface drainage, there have been issues that the Dieterleys have had to deal with that I... I'm unsure of how to approve the surface drainage solution while still hold responsible, you know, the parties for the issues that this family is going through. And I guess I'd take any suggestions or other comments from the planning commission.
Karen.
Getting that thing to work is hard. My question, I think, is to Dale. I'm not sure who went out to the property to make sure that the surface drainage is resolved, and I'm assuming that that has been resolved, the surface drainage. I don't know that, but do you have any suggestion on how they figure out, is it, if it's the water table that's causing that water to come up through the floor, or is it not, the base, the crawl space is not sealed off enough, or do you have any recommendations on how that could be addressed?
First of all, let me start by saying I agree with what Eric said, the purpose for the drainage easement is for surface drainage. I don't have firsthand knowledge, I haven't been to the site, however, I believe Ted Johnson of my group did go out and take a look at it and believes that there is positive surface drainage there. Now, to your question about the water in the crawl space or some surface moisture, about the only way you're going to be able to determine that is probably to do some borings around the house to see if there is a water table that is coincident with the water in the crawl space of the adjoining home. So there's real no easy solution to determine where that water's coming from.
Okay, so from the city's standpoint, the city is saying that the surface drainage has been addressed, so it's not, whether they cut the two feet off of the house next door or not, that's not going to make a difference, it's because that surface water has been addressed, and... It's because that surface water has been addressed and even if the house was closer, it would still be addressed. Is that what you're saying?
I would agree with that assessment, yes.
Okay. Thank you. That answers my question. I am uncomfortable also with, you know, the fact that she has to go through this, but it seems like it's a, it's going to come down to a question of the homeowner and the contractor or the developer to resolve, and whether they have to go forward and, you know, go through a court system or something to get that drainage addressed. That's kind of where I think it's going to head, I guess, in my opinion, but I'll also listen to some of the other folks up here too. So, thanks.
Galen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess Karen just summarized it, summarized my feelings the best as well. The surface drainage issues have been addressed, and that's really, that's really all we can control from the city's side of it. So with that, I'm going to move to approve, or move to approve this as written, and then, like Karen said, I think the rest will be between the owner and the home builder. So that'll, I'll move to approve this.
Is there a second? Karen, second. Amanda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I address a question to Carla Cushman, please?
Certainly, please.
Thank you. Carla, with this discussion from the planning commissioners up here today, and I'm a non-voting member, and if this comes before council, I'll be able to weigh in heavier, but just listening to the conversation from the planning commissioners this morning, it really does come down to that if the surface drainage has been implemented and the water within the crawl space at this point is not addressed due to the encroachment of this house, the city has done everything it can do based on our current ordinances. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I think that is. I think what Galen said and what you said is accurate, that the scope of the city's review on this plan development is limited, and to the extent that there may be additional complaints, I think those would need to be addressed between the homeowner and the builder or the developer.
So for the planning commissioners, what they need to consider today is if there was any other possible action the city could take based on the ordinances or any of our resolutions, they could further that, but at this point, they really need a decision in order to push this forward. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
And is this one of those items, Carla, that depending on the vote of the planning commission, either party could appeal to council, or is the decision from the planning commission set? And final.
You were right about the appeal. Any party can appeal the decision to the council.
All right. But, and I just want to clarify, with that being said, even an appeal going to the city council, based on the city ordinances and the resolutions, there's really no further action the city can take at this time.
Yeah, my counsel would be the same to the council as it is to you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, if there was, if this motion passes, they can appeal. They'd have to put it in writing, appeal to the city council. I just wanted to, is that correct, Becky? Vicki?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, they have seven calendar days to submit that appeal in writing, and then the item would go not to the next city council meeting. It has to skip a meeting because of publication requirements, but we'd work with them to make sure that they know that date if they choose to pursue.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passed. Item number 10.
Item number 10 is 15 UR 018, a conditional use permit to allow a bed and breakfast facility as a conditional use in the low-density residential district. This item was continued from the September 10th, 2015 planning commission meeting to allow notification requirements to be met, and with that, let me take you through some Location of the property is 3410 Hall Street, comprised of 0.15 acres of property, zoned low-density residential district, includes a two-stall garage and access via the alleyway. Zoning of the property, you can see there is general commercial district located to the north, adjacent to West Main Street, kind of a mix of commercial and residential at varying densities in this area. Future land use shows the property is designated for low-density neighborhood. There is mixed-use commercial and employment area located to the north and some urban neighborhood or higher-density residential development located to the east. Future street, or major street map shows West Main is a minor arterial street vicinity map. This is a site plan for the property. You should note, some of the notes there are from previous, the time when a previous ordinance was in effect, so property is in compliance with regard to its front yard setback. The rear yard setback is under 25 feet, as required by ordinance, due to the existing deck. Should note that the applicant is not proposing to do any additions or expansions to the existing structure as a part of this request. The applicant is proposing a maximum two-bedroom bed and breakfast facility to be operated through the Airbnb listing service, although the applicant in her submitted operations plan notes that most of the year, the facility will only be operating as a one-bedroom facility, and the second bedroom will be utilized by her family. She's proposing to put all traffic or associated customer traffic with this will be parking in the driveway where family will be parking in the garage. You should note this, we do have several letters that have come in in opposition to this request, some of them citing traffic as a major concern for this area and on-street parking as well. A look at Hall Street, looking to the west, it's early in the morning, so the glare's a little bad, but looking to the west, looking at the neighboring property to the, I'm sorry, that was looking to the east, and this is the neighboring property to the east. Looking west on Hall Street, Hall Street at this point curves to the north and meets West Main Street at the intersection. I'll look at the properties across the street. As you can see, this is a densely developed neighborhood, the houses, single-family residences, some townhomes, and the properties and structures are fairly close to each other. This is a look at the nearest residence located to the west, of course, with the sign on the property as well. As I previously stated, there have been a number of requests or letters in opposition to this request submitted from residents in the neighborhood site, concerns with the traffic, and also some security concerns with having commercial customers in a residential neighborhood. Staff believes that based on the limited use of the facility, limited to primarily one-bedroom, and if operated in compliance with the submitted operations plan, that this is an appropriate use for the neighborhood. With that, staff is recommending that this application be approved. The stipulation is noted in the staff report. We do have a number of people here today to speak to the item, and the applicant is available to answer questions as well. With that, staff is available for questions at this time.
Vicki?
Madam Chair, I would just like to point out that we did get one letter in support of it, and somehow we failed to link it. That is as a handout on the dais for you today, and I just wanted to bring that specifically to your attention. Thank you.
DeeDee?
Have I brought up the last picture? Can I do that? When I get to the... Okay. Hi. My name is DeeDee Engel, and I live at 3410 Hall Street. I live right next door to the applicant. I have many concerns and questions that have not been answered regarding this conditional use permit for a bed and breakfast, and don't understand why it is being recommended to approve this. I don't feel safe in my neighborhood or right next door at this point. I've lived there for 25 years. We have different people coming and going on a nightly basis. I have had two occasions in the last couple of months where guests staying at the bed and breakfast have come. One particular occasion, a person came and knocked on my door and asked if this was the bed and breakfast, and I said, "No, it's next door." Another occasion, a couple of ladies from, I think it was Massachusetts, parked in front of my house. They got out and they went to the bed and breakfast and checked in. The gal came, one of the gals came back to her vehicle to get something. The gal came to my front door, I was sitting on my couch, she came to my front door, literally opened my door and stepped in and said, "Oops, I'm at the wrong place." These are concerns that I have. Now I keep my front door locked at all times. Like I said, I've lived there for 25 years. I've never had to do this in the past. This is not a typical business, as the applicant has described it. She's comparing this application to a daycare, a home salon, a pet care. The bed and breakfast starts in the afternoon, as she states, her hours are from, check-in time is from 3:00 until noon the next day. These are guests that are staying there through the night. Typical, or the business that she's referring this to is an eight-to-five business. So we're up to dealing with this actually on a nightly basis with strangers in the neighborhood. A question I do have that hasn't been answered is the parking. The applicant does not have ample parking for her bed and breakfast. I do have a couple addition, another additional letter regarding the application that I will turn in to you folks. One of my questions that I would like to know, if the parking plan complies with the city off-street ordinance 17.50.270. The applicant has no access to get out of her garage. There's cars parked in her driveway. She cannot get out of her garage if bed and breakfast people are there. One of my questions is, who will enforce... Okay, who, I'm sorry. Who will enforce these stipulations? I don't understand the fire requirements and why the applicant is allowed to park in front of a fire hydrant on a nightly basis. This is the picture. Again, I didn't know the city had taken...
Is this picture?
Yes. As you can see, these pictures, there's a fire hydrant right behind where that car is parked. I do have additional pictures. I don't know, can I show these or just hand them in? I do have two additional pictures just from this past week of cars parked in front of the fire hydrant. I am actually standing in my driveway, and you can see that the fire hydrant is in proximity of the car there. Here's another one that was taken a couple of days later. Again, the car in front of the fire hydrant. These are just concerns that I have, and I'm wondering who will enforce these stipulations if the parking, if it does go through. I would also like to know how this affects my property value in the future. If I just go to sell my house, what's this going to do for my property value of living right next door? This does not have anything to do with the applicant's character references whatsoever. My concerns are for the guests staying at the bed and breakfast. I've always liked Donna and her family since she's moved into the neighborhood. Been a good addition to our neighbors, our neighborhood. We've always gotten along. I've even helped her, I've loaned her tools, I've helped her daughter fix the lawn mower, I hung out with her granddaughter, would hang out at my house, we'd play with sidewalk chalk on the sidewalk, things like this. So this, Donna, and Donna really seems like a hard worker. None of these problems arose in the neighborhood until May, when she started this bed and breakfast business. Hall Street has always been a quiet, family, well-established neighborhood, and I would hope that we can keep it this way. We don't need this bed and breakfast in our neighborhood, and would you want it in yours? Please consider denying this application. Thank you. Any questions?
Shannon?
Members of the planning committee, I want to thank you for the opportunity for me to voice concerns I have regarding the petition for a conditional use permit to allow a bed and breakfast at the location of 3414 Hall Street. I am Shannon Schafers, a resident on Hall Street who lives across the street at 3415 Hall Street, and have concerns, questions regarding this petition. My concerns have been stated in a letter that has already been submitted to the committee. Questions that I have pertain to the comprehensive plan, policy, guidance for approval or denial. My first question has to do with a vibrant, livable community with regards to LC-1.1E context-sensitive design. It states, "The design and use of this facility mirrors the neighborhood character. How does a bed and breakfast mirror the character of a quiet, established, family-oriented neighborhood?" My second question has to do with the economic stability and growth with regard to EC-1.3A local business support. It states, "The proposed bed and breakfast is a new local business. The conditional use permit ensures that a safe, desirable location is being provided in order to support this new local business. To allow the bed and breakfast into this safe and desirable location compromises the safety of the neighborhood." My third question has to do with responsive, accessible, and effective governance with regards to GOV-2.1A, public input opportunities. Community planning has received a number of inquiries and letters regarding parking and safety concerns with the granting of this petition. With the number of concerned residents on Hall Street who have come forward, why is this permit being recommended for approval? One of the stipulations for approval is for the applicant to provide a minimum of four off-street parking spaces. These include the existing driveway for the guests to use and the existing two-stall garage where the residents will park. Given the work schedules of the residents and the checkout times of the guests, I am concerned over time that the residents will find this arrangement cumbersome to their day-to-day schedules and will not be complying with this stipulation. So, does this four-off-street parking plan meet the Rapid City Municipal Codes? And if so, how will it be enforced? The comprehensive plan conformance states, "The petition is recommended for approval" with three bullet points. The first bullet states, "The limited scope of the proposed business should have a minimal impact on the neighborhood. The bed and breakfast, which has been running since May, has had a negative impact on the neighborhood, evidenced by the number of letters submitted and signatures obtained from concerned residents of Hall Street. Thank you again for providing the time and venue to express my concerns and have my questions heard. I ask that you take the time to look into my questions and consider my concerns prior to approving the application for a conditional use permit to allow a bed and breakfast into our quiet, family-oriented neighborhood." Thank you.
Thank you. Darren? Oh, Darren?
Hi, I'm Darren Beckstrom. I live at 3411 Hall Street, across the street slightly to the southeast, and my wife and myself also have quite a few concerns. To start out with, we have a petition from people that don't approve of the bed and breakfast on the street here. I don't know if you want me to walk that up here? That's from the neighborhood. My wife was unable to make it today. My wife was unable to make it today because we have three small children, so we have a couple of other concerns having small children in the neighborhood. So, my wife and myself, we talked it over, my wife put together this letter, so I'd like to read it for you. Just kind of a little bit of a story of us moving into the house since 2012. We purchased our home in October of 2012. We searched for two years to find our perfect first home to raise our family. Even though my wife and I grew up in Rapid City, one of our childhood homes was just blocks away. We didn't, we didn't even know this lovely neighborhood existed and we drove by it every day. The house was for sale by owner, it was not even listed. The previous owners trusted that we'd take, there would be no issue in selling the house without a realtor. The previous owner's family grew and they moved on due to necessity of a larger house. One of the primary selling points was that the previous owner expressed that the neighborhood was, they were friendly, lovely, trustworthy, and close-knit. This offered the ideal location to have a small-town neighborhood tucked away inside of Rapid City. Both my wife and myself strongly oppose the conditional use permit allowed by the B and B street, or the B and B on our Hall Street. We do not oppose Donna Gilbert's need to add income, nor do we have any issue with her as a person or a neighbor. We have a strong issue with the type of traffic that is added by the B and B. I work out of town for multiple weeks at a time. In our location on the neighborhood, this brings lots of concerns of safety during the absent times when my wife was home alone with three small children. It's taken us years to fully trust the neighbors to allowing the point of our children to play in the front yard. This is partially due to their age. But furthermore, due to the fact that we are cautious of strangers. Slowly getting to know our neighbors, though, personal interactions as well as small gestures such as shoveling our sidewalks and mowing our lawn have given us the confidence and trust of our children are safe. They are, they say it's a village, takes a village to raise a child, but right now our village is on the verge of losing its trust. My wife's parents, Ron and Diane Highness, have worked in the hospitality industry by owning multiple hotels in the Black Hills area for nearly thirty years. When you ask to stay at a hotel, your expectation of safety comes from the condition of the building, the friendliness on, the friendliness of alert twenty-four hours a day, staff, and the locked doors at your room. You don't have the expectation of allowing your children to run freely in the hallways with no concern. Instead, you expect to run into a stranger, stranger into the lobby, the hallway, or other communal areas. However, when you purchase a home, there's an expectation of safety within the neighborhood. There's an expectation that your neighbors and residents on the same street will care for the homes, the yards, the neighbors. They know the dog that freely runs from time to time. They look for the dog to run down the street. They also look for the cat that frequents, frequents our yard. They know that there are multiple children under the age of ten throughout the street and they look for them when they're driving down the street. They're residents who have accountability to this street, they're residents and receive mail. If we live next to a sex offender, we're aware because the address has, has to be registered. We do not trust the online background check to ensure that the safety of our neighborhood. Now, the petitioner was requesting a permit to rent a room on a yearly basis. We're not sure if the permit would, would even be necessary. That would be completely different. The renters, they have become part of the neighborhood. They have become a different resident, they, they have become a different resident who receives mail at Hall Street. This person would care about the condition of our street and would quickly learn about the pets, the neighborhood, and everything else in general. And there's a little bit more there, but I'm going to stop there and say, you know, one of, one of my major, major concerns really is the traffic. I've noticed people driving by and I think they're having a hard time finding it. And the other night, my children were out playing on their tricycles and I think the guy must have gotten frustrated and he was speeding back and forth down the road and going a little fast and I had to kind of yell at him and I finally directed him to the house and I said, hey, it's over here. You know, I have a two-and-a-half-year-old and his favorite thing is basketballs and footballs. He'll go to bed with a basketball in his hand and, you know, I have the concern, our driveway's slightly sloped, what if that ball goes out in the road? I mean, there's always, you always have to stay close to your children. That's the expectation, but the, the added speed just creates an extra danger to where I, I can't be ten feet away from him at any time because people are driving vastly down the road. So, and that being said, Shannon and Dee did a great job presenting and they voiced a lot of my concerns. But my wife and myself, we, you know, there's a, there's like a, an unrest at night where, you know, I check on my children more often than I used to. I mean, they're, because we have a roof leading to the bedrooms and you never know when, when somebody, a stranger, you know, you're added strangers to the neighborhood and you're seeing new faces all the time, which is something, this, this street is, it's one of a kind. Kind of does, if you guys have never been on Hall Street, it kind of does this little L-shaped loop. My wife and myself lived in a condo down the street for years and we never knew this street was there until we went to look for this home. And we found this home and, you know, it's been a great place and the neighbors have been very friendly to us. And Donna Gilbert and her family, you know, they've, they've always been very nice. I worked out of town for a while, actually thought that there was new neighbors quite often. Earlier this summer, I'd come home from the oil field and I was like, hey, welcome to the neighborhood. It's like somebody else must have moved in. So I don't really, I don't, before I become, became aware of the situation, I never really looked across the street that often. But now that being said, as soon as I was aware of it, I know, it was like, wow, there is a lot of traffic and I noticed cars driving by a lot faster. And my biggest concern is my children. And when we bought this neighborhood, we were like, man, this is perfect, there's low traffic and this is a perfect place to raise children. And that's my concerns. Thank you for taking the time allowing me to tell my story. Thank you.
Thank you. Bennett? Bennett? Would you like to speak, sir?
Chair?
Yes.
I believe that the applicant would like to speak before Dennis, if that's okay with you?
Okay.
Donna, if you'd like to speak, that would be fine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Donna Gilbert and I own a home and I want to make that correction. Robert misread the address, that is thirty-four fourteen Hall Street. I am applying for a conditional use permit to allow for a bed and breakfast in my home. The type of business I am facilitated with is called Airbnb. It's an internet-based company. What is Airbnb? Currently, there are twenty million Airbnb users and two thousand and fourteen, it has increased by fifty percent. This year alone, there are eight hundred thousand listings on the website. Today, if you log on to the website, there are currently eighty-eight Airbnb users right here in Rapid City area. There are some residents in Rapid City, in the boundaries of Rapid City, that have been renting their space as early as June of two thousand and eleven. So this is not new and what I'm doing is not new. In two thousand and fifteen, there have been twenty-two new Airbnb users, including myself. Internet-based businesses are only going to get bigger and bigger because the internet is getting bigger and bigger. Airbnb is about so much more than just renting a space. It's about meeting people and gaining experiences. I have developed friendships with my guests and my family has been welcomed to stay at homes all over the world. Cities are realizing that this is a new normal. However, I have recently learned that there are city zoning issues to be complied with. I only ask that the city zoning committee address all Airbnb hosts who abide by the city guidelines and that I'm not singled out. Airbnb handles all the money transactions and release funds to the host, which is me, usually twenty-four hours after the guest has checked in. Airbnb submits a ten ninety-nine form to the IRS on all income generated. My rental space, my plan is year-round to using one basement bedroom, there's two basement bedrooms. Although during tourist season, I did rent out both bedrooms downstairs with a shared bathroom. For example, after this week, I have bookings this week, but I have absolutely nothing for the rest of the year. No, no bookings whatsoever. So it's just really during the peak tourist season. And really, I could even go down to just one bedroom, even during the tourist season. I don't have kitchen facilities for guests, but each room is provided with a queen bed, small fridge, microwave, and commercially-prepared snacks. I don't cook breakfast because I'm not a cook. All guests have access to the entire basement, including the family room. The upstairs living space is not accessible to my guests. Since I became an Airbnb member this year, I have had nearly one hundred guests stay in my home and each and one of those people have been very respectful to me, to my family, and of the neighborhood. I met with the city planner and the attorney to discuss the guidelines outlined for a B and B. I was told I passed all the requirements that included the parking, egress windows, fencing, lot size. Pictures of my property were submitted for review along with the letter of operation and conditional use permit fees were paid. I also included for the council reviews, all the reviews that I've had, that everybody's written as they've come into my home. And that shows how I interact with my guests and how they interact with me as a host. Neighborhood concerns, there are seven, eight neighborhood complaint letters and I appreciate their concerns. And I would like to address some of their, some of their issues. Safety in the selection process. Airbnb now has six hundred people in their customer service and trust and safety departments. The host guarantee is one million dollars per booking. This is just to safeguard property owners. Each guest has to go through multiple verifications before a host can accept or decline a booking. This process happens on the Airbnb website. Hosts and guests post reviews about each other on the website regarding their state. This is really important as a host, important to me as I carefully screen my guests before allowing them into my home. If I see negative reviews on a guest, I don't accept. If I see positive reviews, I go ahead and accept that booking. Safety is always a concern. We live in a nice neighborhood and there is crime everywhere regardless of where you live. I take precautions. We lock our cars constantly. I lock my windows and doors every night, not because of my guests, but because of the local crime right here in Rapid City. The fire hydrant, that was an issue when I bought the home and I noticed that it was right out front of my home. But the state law does read parking is allowed fifteen feet from the fire hydrant. And the pictures there, I do have to remind my seventeen-year-old daughter to properly park and not be in a hurry and to go in the house and leave. And that is something that I will talk to her about and that is to, we have it marked. We, when I got, when I bought the house, we went out, measured, marked out fifteen feet this way, fifteen feet this way. And I have stressed to her multiple times to not park within that fifteen feet. And I apologize for that and that is something that I would talk to my daughter about and stressly and, and make that important. That is an important factor. It is very important. I wouldn't want anybody parking in front of it either. Property value was another concern. I do have to remind everyone that there are approximately thirteen commercial businesses located just north of our homes, just right on the other side of the alley, in my backyard, in Dee Dee's backyard, the Grayvilles, their backyard. There's also a lot of rental properties down, down the street as well, multiple duplexes, some are condos. I've known, I've had friends that live down there in a rental. And there's also this Westside Studios located on West Main, just north of the BD subdivision. I don't know a whole lot about that place. I don't know if they actually rent to sex offenders. I don't know that. And my home is owner-occupied, which holds higher property value than full-time rentals, which can have high tenant turnovers. Sergio at the Premier Mortgage, he informed me that Rapid City property values have only increased over the years. When I have guests in my home, it is always chaperoned by myself or my mother. Guests are never left alone. I left for a trip a couple of weeks ago to Denver. My mother came up and maintained the home and she has now become friends with my guests on Facebook and they talk all the time. I encourage open communication. I am not, I haven't been aware of any confrontations between my guests and neighbors. There hasn't been no excessive noise from my home, drunk or obnoxious guests, et cetera. Alcohol, drugs, and smoking are not allowed in my home as displayed on my Airbnb website. I do allow smoking. Residents can go outside and smoke. There was a letter stated they were creeped out by a guy that was smoking. That would be something that I could address if that was brought to my attention. I could have made my guests go in my backyard, go back there and smoke. That's perfectly fine with me as long as you don't do it in my home. There hasn't been one police report submitted on our address, property, since we moved in in February. We are not disturbing the peace. However, if I was made of concern, made aware of the concerns, I could have rectified the situations immediately. I do try to be a good neighbor. If a guest doesn't have access to GPS and needs assistance, I have been known to meet guests to direct them to my home. I've done that on two occasions out of everybody and just to avoid confusion. I don't, I've never had a guest tell me that they've gone to a wrong house. Or I would have asked them, which house did you go to? And I, I, I would definitely apologize for that. But nowadays, I mean, everybody's got a phone with GPS or whatever, but the people, this last couple that I went to go get their phones, they lost service because they had some wild service from somewhere else and couldn't get internet on their phone. We don't have a home association on Hall Street. My guests, they are in the neighborhood and they've always been respectful citizens during their stay. In conclusion, there's a variety of reasons why people started Airbnb right here in Rapid City. For example, there's a teacher in the Rapid City school system who I quote from his website on Airbnb. "I feel it is my calling to be an educator, even though I teach in the nation's lowest-paid state, which is why I love utilizing Airbnb to supplement my teaching salary." I'm not the only one doing this. I mean, they, they, everybody, there's so many different walks of life that are doing this. Everybody's got different professions. I choose Airbnb to also supplement my income, but also to pay for medical expenses, car repairs, home improvements, and build my retirement fund. I appreciate you giving me the time and opportunity to submit my request for an in-home-based bed and breakfast. The city council has informed me that I'm the first Airbnb user that has been addressed to these issues and who has applied for a permit. Please recognize that the multiple complaints doesn't always meet valid justifications. I ask the committee for your careful consideration regarding this matter and the decision you make today will start a precedence in the Airbnb usage right here in Rapid City. I ask that you do concur with the city planning staff in approving my request as noted in the project report. As to my residents zooming down the street, I've noticed pizza deliveries zooming down the street. There's teenagers that zoom down the street. Dee Dee's even told me about a pizza delivery and calling the pizza place and telling them about their delivery guy. There are many, many more people that drive down that street. It is not a dead-end street. It does come out. There is an exit from both ends of the street. Thank you. Isn't the council have any questions for me?
Jan?
My question would be for Carla, so I'll wait if you wish.
No, we have no questions.
And I just wanted to show you that I printed the Airbnb users in Rapid City. And if anybody wanted to look through these, these are people that need to be addressed just like me. This is in the boundaries of Rapid City. This is going on. I'm not the only one. Thank you.
Jan?
Carla, I, I understand this is a permitted use in low-density residential with a conditional use permit, which means either we have approved B and Bs in residential areas before setting a precedent or this is the first one we've ever approved and it's setting a precedent. But regardless, my understanding is to deny it, we would need a unique reason compared to other bed and breakfasts in residential neighborhoods or risk litigation that we lose in the courts because we denied it with. lose in the courts because we denied it without, we, there was precedent set. So I'm just questioning whether it's even possible for us to deny legally without having some unique reason particular to this bed and breakfast other than others in the same zoning.
That's a good question. The conditional use ordinance lists out criteria for review. I think there's 12 of them here. They're, the criteria are unique to the neighborhood. So it has to do with the location, character and features of the property, the location, character and design of the neighboring properties, those kind of criteria that are different based on which neighborhood you're in. And I know you, I think last planning commission, you did approve a bed and breakfast in a Park Forest district that was, definitely the neighborhood was different from the neighborhood here. So I would encourage you, if you're making, when you're making your decision, either in, in favor of the bed and breakfast or against the bed and breakfast, that you look at those criteria for review and think about the unique neighbor, unique features of this neighborhood and of this bed and breakfast to support your decision.
Just a question for staff on this one. I guess I'm not naive enough to, to believe that this hasn't been happening all over the city for a while, just as the applicant stated. But this is the first time I can recall dealing with this, this particular issue. The bed and breakfasts in the past have been, that I recall seeing have been more destination-type Could you explain a little bit what the, what the current rules and regulations, state or local, where these would fall under, these type of lodging situations?
Madam Chair.
Vicky.
That's a very good question, Eric. So as Carla explained, in this zoning district, you have permitted uses, single-family homes, the, a garage, et cetera. A conditional use, which a bed and breakfast is a conditional use in this zoning district, means that the use may be appropriate, but there is specific criteria that it has to meet. In addition to the 12 criteria set forth as a conditional use permit, within our ordinance, we have criteria that must be met specifically for a bed and breakfast. And one of those is, as an example, you have to provide off-street parking. If your family and/or your guests require parking in the street, then that would not be the right location for a bed and breakfast. You have to provide your parking on the property itself. There's also some review in regards to the lighting, the signage, what type of impact it would have, based on whether or not it appears to be a residential structure with a home occupation versus a commercial structure. This came to us through code enforcement, and I'm sure that we'll, we'll continue to receive these from code enforcement as neighbors do call these in. The benefit to you is this, when, when we write, wrote this staff report, we speculated as to what impact it was having on the neighborhood. In many instances, and in most instances, the use hasn't initiated. So we go out, we look at it, we look at that operational plan, and we bring, bring a recommendation forward to you. In this case, we reviewed the operational plan, reviewed the property, and if operated in compliance with that plan, it appeared to be appropriate for the neighborhood. The benefit you have today is that it is in operation, and you get to hear from the applicant as to how it's been operated, and you get to hear from the neighborhood as to what impact it has on them. The difficult part before you today is you have to weigh those two sides of this request and determine whether or not this is the right location. The concern that I see, the one thing that was disclosed today, is that there may be some parking in the street by a member of the family, and that would not be permitted. That would mean that the lot isn't big enough for both the residential users and the commercial activity. So that might certainly be something that you would like to discuss when you make your decision today. Have I answered your question, Eric?
I guess maybe, in general, though, the, the, there's, there's no distinction drawn in current law between, you know, a bed and breakfast in the, in the heart of the hills that offers mountain biking and four-wheeling or whatever, and a bed and breakfast in the middle of Rapid City that is, you know, booked online and, and offers temporary lodging. It's currently regulatory treated the same.
If it were in the middle of the Black Hills, we wouldn't have any regulations that would be specific to it. But if it were in Rapid City, and we do have properties that are, that have acreage in the city limit, you just approved one at your last meeting.
Sure.
Very remote, large lot, ample parking, significant distance from the adjacent lands, and that one did get approved, and the neighbors all actually, no, no one offered any voice of opposition to that. What we look at, and we have brought you similar requests over the years in other areas where it is a standard residential neighborhood, and they wanted to do a bed and breakfast. Some got approved and some didn't. From us, when we first walk into it, it looks like it, they appear to be consistent with each other, and when we look at the operational plan, it appears that it's going to work. When we start hearing testimony from the neighbors and we learn of issues that have resulted, we have to go back to that criteria. Traffic is one. You can look at it and say, is this creating additional traffic that is unacceptable in a residential area? Parking, are they parking in the street? Because it has to have off-street parking only. Is it within close proximity to a commercial use? Is this in keeping with character of the neighborhood as a whole? And so those are things that, when you're making your decision, you need to look at that criteria.
Thank you.
Galen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I guess I'm inclined to support this, just because the issues are parking and navigation are getting to the residents, and as long as those things are followed by Donna and her business, I, I think this, there's really no reason why we should deny this. So I think just really parking is the main issue for me, and if we have, I presume it's code enforcement that would be, or I'm, I'm not sure who would enforce the parking violation. It's maybe my question that I should ask. And then with that, I'll, like I said, I guess I'm inclined to support this.
Vicky.
So if this were to be approved with stipulations that secured that there would be no on-street parking and that it be limited to two bedrooms and some of the other operational identifiers that the applicant brought forward today, and it was noted by the neighborhood that it was not being operated in compliance with that, they would in fact notify code enforcement. Code enforcement would notify us, and we do have a process called a revocation of a conditional use permit. It would be back before the planning commission, and you could consider it again at that time and would have the ability to revoke it.
Karen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I, I have stayed in bed and breakfast places, and, and they're, they're wonderful places to, to spend your night, and, but every place that I've spent that time has been more of a remote area. It's been similar to the ones that we just approved a week or so ago, where you have the opportunity to, to go to a place and, and know that you're, you're separated from the neighbors, you're, you're by yourself with that person that has that bed and breakfast, and you do have a rapport with whoever you stay with. In this instance, I look at this as if this was my neighborhood, and the idea of people coming and going wouldn't bother me so much as, as the parking issue. My neighborhood has a lot of, a lot of extra cars, it seems like, in my neighborhood, and it's very frustrating, and they're from the people that live there, so it's a little different. In this case, I think that the fact that the two parking spaces are in the garage, and, and if there's a way that they could stay in the garage and not have, go out in the street to park, I think would make a difference, but I don't see that happening. If, if I was a homeowner and I, I had my car in the garage, and there was, the people that I had staying in my home were parked in the driveway, and I needed to get out for some reason, I'd have to wake them up or get them out of there, that just is not a, a good situation. I, I am, I'm concerned about the, the parking issue specifically, and, and it is extra traffic in the neighborhood. This is a very nice neighborhood. I've seen it, and it, it doesn't look like a place that would have that extra traffic, I guess, is, is my concern. So I am, I am not supporting this request, and it's, it's, it's something that I think that we will be looking at over the next few years if, if we have more of these in the neighborhood. The ones that we have in the past approved did seem to have their separate parking spots for their, their guests, and this does not have separate parking for their guests, in my opinion, so I'm not supportive of it.
Galen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I guess I'll just see where we're at, and I'll move to approve this. Like I said before, I can't see any reason to deny it other than the parking, those have been addressed with a stipulation, so.
Motion's been made by Galen and seconded by Jan to approve this request. Bennett, do you wish to speak?
I am Donna's stepfather, and I've known Donna for almost 30 years. She's my daughter. She's a hard-working lady, a single mother with, with a grandchild now, and, and I've watched her grow up, and it's, it's been really tough on her in a lot of, lot of ways. She had a house sold out from underneath her before she had this house, and there was no place in Rapid City to stay for a couple nights because we had a big convention on or something was going on up here, and so she had to stay in her car for a couple nights. Property values of Rapid City, first, I'll tell you, my education, I have a Bachelor in Human Services, and I have nearly a master's on Lakota management. I'm also a former member of the Ogalasoo Tribal Council, 12 years. I'm on, been on the Board of Trustees for Ogalasoo Lakota College for 15 years plus. I do, I've been a former professional rodeo cowboy, so I've been all over the country. And right now, for the last 20-some years, I do historical trauma grief work with other people in other tribes. What I see here is Rapid City is expanding. I see, since I was a little guy, this, this Rapid City has really, really grown, and I have lived in multiple cities. I lived in Cleveland, Ohio, San Francisco, Oakland, Salinas, California. My dad worked in various places, in steel mills, and, and I, I also worked in other places and went to school in California. So I know the, the expansions of these cities. In Salinas, California, when we first went out there, was, there were, there was probably 36,000 people in that town. That was in mid-sixties. There's well over 200,000 people now, and that's been about 45, 50 years. So as I see Rapid City is expanding and growing, the property values are going to go up, and these small, little places like Longah Creek where Donna lives are going to be gone, because it's going to grow really fast. You know, you got a, a main highway right above you, two blocks away, goes north and goes west. The traffic could stick there, it's a commercial, right, right next to the, where they live. So we've got to take that into consideration. And as far as the people that are coming in, she said they were screened, and I know that there's, they, they really check them out. And I've talked, I haven't talked to any of her guests. I don't, I, I haven't visited, visited her very often on, on her business. But I know that people from I've met with like this country, like this area. This summer, I ran a retreat with the Zen peacemakers across the world, up in just west of Lead on the Santisou tribe. We had 11 country people, 11 countries were represented, about 200 people from different places across the United States and the world, and they loved this area. And the first two nights, they stayed here in Rapid City, right, it was right after the rally. We talk about the economics that we bring in here to you as Rapid City people in the state of South Dakota. We, we need that too down on reservation. We, we are concerned about safety also. But if you want to look at the sexual predators in this, in this area, it's up on, it's up on the internet, you find them not far from this, these areas where she lives, and those are more concerned. And we have people that, we might have a young person get, get drunk and raise hell in that neighborhood. And as far as parking is concerned, I, I'm an old car guy, and that parking, those parking areas are really packed. I've almost hit my neighbor's, her neighbor's car, or pickup, several times backing out of that driveway because it's parked right near the road. There's a multiple vehicles on that street. You know, you gotta really look at the whole thing. I don't see any junkers out there, but I see some nice old pickups and cars, and I'm really aware of that. But the parking, that may be an issue, but it's also an issue with the neighbors. They have multiple cars. So we, we must really look at that, and Donna has been a hard, hard worker, and I think that, you know, by proving her, you're, you're going to see other businesses flourish along in that area.
Thank you. Thank you. The motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to just identify to the audience members that this is an appealable item. Anyone can appeal this item to the city council. That appeal needs to be submitted, submitted to our office in writing within seven calendar days, and then it wouldn't go to this next city council meeting. It would be the following one, and we'd make sure everyone's aware of that date, too.
Thank you. Galen. I have to leave. Item number 11.
Item number 11 is a final plan development. The applicant is requesting that the issue be continued not to the August, October 8th, but to the October 22nd meeting. They indicated that they would like to meet with staff before this goes, before the planning commission, and their engineer is not in town right now, so October 22nd, that's what staff recommends.
Jan made the motion. Karen seconded the motion to move item number 11 to October 22nd meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item number 12, please.
Thank you. Item number 12 is 15 PD 030, a final, or a major amendment to the plan development to allow outdoor sales events to be located at the existing Shields property. Let me take you through some slides. We're all familiar with the Shields property located at Rushmore Crossing Development, as you can see vicinity here. Aerial view. at Rushmore Crossing Development, as you can see vicinity here. Aerial view. This was taken before the major expansion, major amendment to the plan development, which you, as planning commissioner, reviewed a couple years ago. Zoning the property is general commercial district, developed as, as part of the Rushmore Crossing commercial development. Eglin Street there listed as an arterial street on the major street plan. This is an identified regional activity center as part of the comprehensive plan. Site plan, this is a site plan showing the expansion of the Shields that she reviewed a couple years ago. The proposed location of this tent is located right here, within the parking lot. We'll show you some pictures later in a moment that'll clarify exactly where that parking lot's located at. The applicant is requesting that she, that the Shields be allowed to erect this tent twice a year for 48 hours at a time for annual sales events. The, the space needed in order to erect the tent safely would require a reduction in parking at those times of 16 spaces. You can see this, the parking layout for the entire Rushmore Crossing area. In this photo photograph, or in this graphic, the tent would be located here. Blurry picture of what the tent looked like. Shot of the property, as you can see the sign posted on the property in front of the Shields. A look at that frontage road along Rushmore Crossing, looking to the east. Looking to the west. This is the actual location of the tent, that wedge-shaped parking island located directly across from the entrance of the, of the store. This would be the location of the tent, but since it, you know, be located on the grass, but these tie-outs and stakes would be required to extend into the parking area. I'll look at the parking, the parking lot on the west side of the store, east side of the store, and then from the other, other end of the parking lot, looking towards Shields west and east. And one more shot of the proposed location of the tent. Based on the very limited use of the facility, or of this particular use, twice a year for 48 hours at a time, and based on the applicant's submitted operations plan, which shows that they will require employees to have, or to park in alternate parking during these events, it does not appear that this proposed use will have a negative impact on the parking, overall negative impact on the parking when this, this event is in use. And with that, staff is recommending that the application be approved. The stipulations, note in the staff report. We do have representative here from Shields to answer any questions if you have them. And staff is available for questions at this time.
Eric?
I've got no problem with the outdoor sales. The, that grass area, that's not a stormwater retention pond, is it?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure it wasn't a big dip.
Motion's been made by Karen and seconded by Jan to approve item number 12. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item 13.
Item 13 is a major amendment to a plan development to allow an on-sale liquor establishment in conjunction with a salon. Unfortunately, due to staff error, the incorrect sign was posted on the property, and we weren't able to fix that to meet the notification requirement for the sign being posted. So due to staff error, staff recommends that the major amendment be continued to the October, or, yeah, October 8th Planning Commission meeting to allow proper notification.
Galen made the motion to, and Jan seconded the motion to continue to the October 8th meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item number 14.
Thank you. Item number 14 is 15 PD 33, a final plan development to allow mini storage units to be located in the general commercial district. The applicant has requested this item be continued to the October 8th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. That's the recommendation that we'll be making to you today. Or we should note that due to a misunderstanding in the submitted, or that staff had with the submitted plans, there was a miscalculation on the height, height of the proposed fence and the materials that you'll see. And that height of the fence will not exceed six feet as required by ordinance. As such, the exception that she might see in the staff report today is not necessary. Staff will be bringing forward revised and additional information to you at the October 8th meeting. With that, staff recommends to continue.
Karen? Karen made the motion, and Eric seconded, Eric seconded the motion to continue to the October 8th meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Any other discussion items?
Just wanted to remind the planning commission that you'll have elections coming up next month, so you guys might want to think about that. And we do have two planning commissioners who need to let us know if they would like to extend their stay on planning commission. Eric, you are one of them, and we'll be contacting Mr. Brewer. We can talk outside the meeting, but certainly things to think about. So we've got some openings coming up, folks.
I entertain a motion to adjourn. Jan made the motion to adjourn, and Galen seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. You know, I know what I came in for, and mine was just a community member for sidewalks.